I'd like to call to order the Spark City Council meeting of Monday, August 11, 2014 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Councilmembers Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a call, thank you.
Okay, invocation speaker was supposed to be Barb West, but she was called away, couldn't be here today, so in lieu of not having a prayer, if we could all have a moment of silence, please, for our troops and those that are in harm's way. Thank you. Next is pledge, if you'd all stand for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Smith, would you lead us?
Absolutely, if you'll join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should I have you do it?
Yeah.
Okay, next is public comment, anyone want to speak under public comment, I have no speaking cards. Okay, next is approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order?
He wants to speak.
Oops, sorry. You do, come on down. I'm sorry. And then when you're done, sir, just fill out one of our speaking cards, the clerk will give it to you, okay? And just give us, have a seat and give us your name for the record.
All right.
Push the, yeah, you're on, you're, you're, you're on, go ahead.
Mark Cording, but I think I'm probably out of order, I want to speak on one particular issue, I just want to make sure I have time to comment on that.
Okay, so you want, you can say something under public comment now, then you can also speak on it then if you want.
I'll speak on it at the appropriate time.
Okay, and which one is that?
That would be the digital sign.
Okay, then if you'll just fill out a, one of our, the clerk will give you a card to fill it out, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda as outlined by staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Approval of the minutes, consideration possible approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of Monday, or the meeting of July 14, 2014, and the special Spark City Council meeting of July 10, 2014, any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the meeting minutes of July 14, 2014, and July 10, 2014, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, announcements, we have none. Moving on to consent items, anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items eight one through eight five.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve consent items eight one through eight five, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, general business items, nine point one, consideration and possible acceptance of a traffic safety grant in the amount of $36,595 to purchase electronic citation and crash collection equipment. Chief Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, we're coming before you, another fine job by Officer Niebelion in looking for grants to further our efforts. What we have before you is a grant from the Nevada Department of Public Safety, the Office of Traffic Safety, to provide for us handheld devices that allow us to write electronic tickets and get out of the paper ticket mode, along with investigating traffic accidents. The purpose behind the state wanting us to use these is it gets us almost immediate information into the Nevada Citation Accident Tracking System, or NCATs, which then goes to and helps fund our federal dollars and how much money we bring back into the state that funds such things as joining forces and all that type of stuff. So the state has offered a grant to provide for us an additional 25 units, which would then go with the current 15 that we have, and almost provide all of patrol with these electronic handheld devices, and then further in that. In the future, we're continuing to work with the Muni Court to provide that link between the NCAT system and the Muni Court, which will make the citation process completely paperless from the time the officer writes it to the time that it gets over to Muni Court for processing. So this is another one of those technological advancements that is going to make our job easier and eliminate human error in the process.
Okay, questions for the chief? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve nine point one as outlined.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve nine point one as outlined by staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously with those present, okay? Thanks, chief, appreciate it. Next is nine point two, consideration and possible approval of the 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant through the Washoe County School District. Welcome, Shawna.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmember Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. This is a grant that we partner with the school district for annually with regard to helping cover the cost of the staffing in five of our after-school sites. Helps offset the costs of the staff so that the families can afford to go to the program for low or no cost.
Questions for Shawna. Okay, good, good job, Shawna. Looking for a motion.
Thank you.
I move to accept and approve the 21st Century Community Learning Center's grant as entered into the Washoe County School District for the 2014-15 year.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve nine point two, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks Shawna.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, we got all the community services guys dressed up in ties today, I like this. Pretty good stuff. Nine point three, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for the Prater Way and El Rancho Drive pavement resurfacing project in the amount of $51,750. Mr. Hummel?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city, this item before you, interlocal agreement with the Regional Transportation Commission. In this instance, it is for the inclusion of replacement of 18 stormwater drop inlets on the project they are performing on El Rancho, a little piece between Victorian and Prater Way, and then Prater Way from Stanford to Howard Drive, basically allows us to include this work without having a separate contract, two contractors out there messing traffic up worse. With that ends what I've got, if you have any questions.
Questions for Mr. Hummel. Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County for Prater Way and El Rancho Drive pavement resurfacing project for $51,750.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan. Welcome to the meeting, Mike. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, good job, Andy, that tie makes you pretty smart.
Yep.
Nine point four, consideration and possible award of the 2015 Street Rehabilitation Unit One bid number 1415-003 for Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $637,700. Mr. Speedhump?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, John Erickson, Transportation Manager, as the mayor alluded to, this is a contract for the 2015 Unit One project with Sierra Nevada Construction. The project limits are from Howard Drive to O'Callahan on both Rosemary and Fargo. What the scope is, is we're going to be removing and replacing the asphalt pavement, as well as doing some repairs to curb, gutter, sidewalk, and handicap ramps. The engineer's estimate on the project was $700,000. As I indicated earlier, S and C came in with a low bid of $637,700. There's 40 working days on the project, and we should be completed with the project by mid-October, so if there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them.
When does this contract start, John?
If it gets approved today, we'll get started on about the 25th of August.
So have we notified anybody yet of we're going to be doing this, I mean, the neighbors and all that stuff?
We will be notifying them as soon as, if the project gets approved today, we'll start notifying them next week.
Okay, because I know we had a little bit of problem in one area recently, and I just want to make sure we get the word out.
Yeah, no, we will get those folks notified.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my comment is just on the contractor that's doing the work. You know, we've got, this particular contractor's doing a bunch of work up here on Prater Way, and I've had business, I've been coming up down Prater probably 10 times a day over the last week that it's been going on, and they've been doing an excellent job with flag people and signage and everything, trying to keep the businesses and stuff open. I don't know if we're getting complaints or anything else like that on it, but I can tell you from, from a motorist's point of view, it's one of, they've been one of the better signage projects that I've seen out there in a while in keeping traffic flowing. I know it's very congested because you have two or three things going on, every couple of blocks, somebody else has got something going on, but, you know, I think they've been doing a good job, so I think hopefully they carry it on in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and that, just to add on to that, you know, we met with the school district on Friday, just to coordinate the, you know, getting the kids in and out of Dilworth, and so they did an excellent job coordinating that meeting, and like you said, they've done a great job with the traffic control so far.
I know it's a difficult project at best, I mean, you know, I don't care how you look at it, it's a difficult project, you're going to get complaints on it, but they've done, every time I've gone through there, they've had flag people and, you know, making sure traffic's flowing properly, so, thank you.
Pass it along.
I'll be more than happy to make a motion, Mayor, if there's no other questions.
Go ahead.
I move to award the 2015 Street Rehabilitation Project Unit One to Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $637,007.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve nine point four as outlined by staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, nine point five, consideration and possible direction to sponsor a master plan amendment, rezone and code amendment for certain properties within the transit-oriented development corridor, generally located northwest of the intersection of East Prater Way and I Street, Sparks, Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, Tim Thompson, senior planner for the record. Staff is seeking direction today from the city council regarding a master plan amendment rezone associated with removing a portion of the transit corridor from the area plan itself. Currently, we actually believe this layer is wrong and that it's actually encompasses these two additional properties up here, but nevertheless, we would be proposing to move the line to essentially take those parcels out of the transit-oriented development corridor area plan. On June 4, Tanamera Construction submitted a site planner review application for the construction of a new Taco Bell. The Taco Bell restaurant is looking to demolish the existing building and construct a new building. They're looking to take advantage of the existing utilities on the site and pad location, parking lot, site improvements. By tearing down the building and rebuilding, they would actually be considered a redevelopment project in the transit-oriented development design manuals, which would in essence trigger full compliance with the TOD manuals. So the, the building would have to be pushed up to the Prater Way frontage, they would have to meet the minimum FAR requirements, and so obviously that posed a problem for staff. We met with the applicant and talked with them about the possibility of, of doing some type of reconstruction or remodeling of the building where perhaps they didn't tear down the entire building to rebuild. They've come back and said that the reason why they chose to go this route in the first place was because to simply remodel would actually cost more. Staff got together, we brainstormed, we came up with, with four alternatives. The first was meet all the requirements of the TOD manual, do nothing. The other was to renovate rather than reconstruct the building, and then four, staff offered to bring a request forward to the city council to support the amendment to the area plan and, and the rezonings. I would point out that in the financial impact section, that there may be a cost for the preparation of legal descriptions and boundary maps to support the rezone, we're estimating that that could run the city about $5,000, if you just add in the fees that a normal applicant would pay to cover staff time, we're into, we're into the $8,000 to $10,000 range that this would cost to, to pursue this. And staff is seeking your direction today on whether to move forward with this request or not.
Mr. Lawson?
Tim, I'm not a big fan of TODs, I don't think that's any secret, can we just take all of Prater out? We made an exception for the Maverick, and they didn't have to comply with the TOD, I mean, I don't see us making anyone comply along Prater, because it just doesn't make sense to move a business to the front with all your parking in the rear. So I'm, I'd be in favor of just removing Prater out of the TOD entirely.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think staff is aware of how I feel on this, and I think the, the question now just comes to, to, you know, do we just throw TOD out? Just get rid of it? Because, you know, we're spending taxpayer dollars here trying to fix something that we spent, I think we spent a quarter of a million dollars on this TOD plan to begin with, and that's our same people that are doing our master plan update now, so, you know, this thing's been in existence since 2008, I'm not aware of one project that's gone into TOD that hasn't had difficulty in getting through the process, and, you know, I think to go in and say for these three property owners, or however many you have there, we're going to spend $10,000 of taxpayer money so they can go ahead and do their development. I agree with the concept that, you know, Taco Bell's been a good business there for a long time, they're actually improving the, the facility, tearing it down, building a new facility, they're bringing up new tax values, they're doing a lot, they're doing what we want them to do. But we're also putting some obstacles in their way on out there, and it's costing us $10,000 to remove those obstacles. So I, I'm not too far away from just saying that I'd much rather spend the $10,000 and get rid of TOD altogether than to sit down and say, well, we're going to continue piecemealing this thing as we go along, because it's all, now it's who you are, it's where your piece of property is. You come in and, well, all I have to do is complain to the city and they'll go spend taxpayer dollars to reverse their decision and do something different with it. So I, I, I think fundamentally, you know, before we spend a dime, we should sit down and discuss whether we're going to continue doing this, because Mr. Lawson's right, you know, another business, we went through this whole process, we paid for it, we're on the second now, we don't even know what the other two business owners, if they're going to agree to it or not. I think it's time to just sit down and say, you know, we either rework TOD where these situations can be handled on a very effectively manner, or we get rid of TOD, as simple as that. I mean, call it, call it a big mistake. I am still a believer in TOD, but I think we got issues here where it's just not fair, it's just not fair to the, to the, to the business community, so I think there has to be a solution out here without costing a lot of taxpayer monies to do it.
Response, I'm under our notice, city planner, response to both Councilman Lawson's and Councilman Schmidt's comments, you know, I think this, this particular area that we're looking to remove is logical in the sense that, you know, it's essentially built out, the uses along that corridor are largely auto-oriented uses, I mean, you have a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through, and you have an auto business, the Pepways. I understand the frustration, I do believe that, you know, I think the TOD plan and standards have merit still, as Councilman Schmidt alluded to, certainly in terms of those larger parcels at the corner of Prater and McCarran, there's a lot of potential there. We, we are currently processing a site plan review for, you know, the 20 acres long Marina Gateway Drive that are coming in as a TOD project and are complying with those standards. So I, I guess, you know, in the, in, in terms of whether we move now to remove the TODs altogether, or severely or significantly reduce their size, we can do that, but it's not something that we're going to do over the next few months, you know, and the cost is going to be not $10,000 because, you know, the, the legal descriptions get much more expensive because we're dealing with a lot more property, and ultimately, you know, we can't conclude that process without amending the regional plan itself. So we can go that route, this, I don't think makes anyone happy to have to go through this exercise to address the concerns in this particular instance with this particular property and this project, but, you know, if we, if we, if you prefer to give us direction to pursue a wholesale amendments or elimination of the TOD, then, you know, that's probably going to take a year, or two, or three, depending on how long it takes to end the regional plan, and certainly it's not going to address the needs of this particular project and this particular property owner on the timeframe that they're looking for us to, to, to help address it.
Yeah, I think what needs to be done, if, if the TOD needs to be eliminated, you want the TOD eliminated, then ask the manager to bring something to the council like we're doing, like we did with this project before, bring it to the council, they'll put it on the agenda, we'll discuss it, I don't think this is the time to discuss it, it's not agendized for that discussion, is it, Chet?
Right.
So, I mean, we can do the same thing we're doing right now with, with this particular process and bring it to the council, and we can talk about it on an agendized item. Mr. Lawson?
And just to be clear, there are places that TOD makes sense to me. Along Vista Boulevard didn't make sense, along Prater doesn't make sense to me, so yes, I think we should agendize this for a future meeting, and let's look at making some severe cuts back on the TOD, because Prater just doesn't fit in in my mind, and as far as getting these guys what they want, yeah, it makes perfect sense to do what they're doing, and McDonald's does this all the time, take old stores, knock them down completely, rehook up with the existing utilities, and build a brand-new building that meets their quality of standards for making their food, and it's, it's quite a deal, they do it all over the country, so we're going to run into more and more of these situations, especially along Prater, I think, and I'd just like to see it gone eventually.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then I'll narrow my questions on down, instead of the TOD as a whole, I'll narrow down to this piece of property. What triggers the taxpayer versus the developer pay for a rezoning?
In this particular case, Councilman Schmidt, the, let me go to this map here, so the, the yellow outlined parcel is the actual Taco Bell site itself, because the TOD boundary includes a total of six properties, and because it's part of the city's master plan, staff believed that it was the right thing or our responsibility to, to sponsor this.
So if I recall right, there was an excess of 6,000 lots that fell under the TOD ordinance, is that correct?
I don't remember the, the number offhand, Councilman Schmidt.
Because we had discussion about how big this was, and how many lots, how many properties that it encompasses, so I'm going to just use that number, what I remember, 6,000 lots. We notified them all by mail, we did everything by the book on every single lot exactly the same. So what qualifies for this is because a half a dozen lot owners got together and said that we don't like this now, you know, six years after the fact, and we want the government to pay, pay for it. Is that what triggered it?
I think we offered.
Short answer is no, you know, we have one property owner of the six properties there that has made an application to the city, this was one of the solutions that, that staff brought forward as, as a way of, of addressing that particular situation, and because that change, or those changes, would involve more than just this one property, we felt that it was something that if we were going to do this, that it would, it would be something that the city sponsored.
So any one of those 6,000 lot owners can come in with this, and the city would have to pay for the master plan change, any one of those 6,000 lots that we changed, if they got a couple of people together, came through with what they thought was a reasonable, reasoned to change the master plan, the city is volunteering to pay for that.
We volunteered to bring the, bring this forward for the council to give us direction to do it, if the council does not want to do that, then, I mean, that's, that's where the decision is made essentially. And, and, and Councilman Schmidt, if, you know, if the, if the council wishes to give this broader direction in terms of, you know, not, not bringing these forward, not bringing these requests forward, then, you know, we could do that as well.
I'm trying to find out what our policy is. How do we handle taxpayer dollars? That's what I want to understand, I want to know what our policy is, on what triggers us volunteering to pay $10,000 to a property owner for the process of doing something that any other developer in the city, the property owner would pay for. So what is our policy? How do we, how does staff determine that, well, this is something that we should pay for, or it's something that the developers should pay for? Because I'm not familiar with any policy. Normally, the developers that I see, every single thing they do, they pay for, if they request it, they pay for it. So I'm just trying to figure out, where's our policy that dictates which, how does this handle?
Well, I think Mr. Thompson addressed the, the policy that we've been, you know, essentially operating on the basis of, which is if it involves more than, you know, the, the single property owner, then, you know, we would, we would bring that forward as the city sponsored.
Two property owners can raise something forward, and it's changed.
Well, again, we would be looking, if the city council wishes to formulate policy on this, then that, you know, certainly that would be helpful.
So we have no policy?
We have no firm policy in that regard.
That's what I'm trying to understand, is that this is a case-by-case, we do it as we see fit to spend taxpayer money, and I think that's wrong.
And that's why this item comes to the city council.
You know, looking back, I think we've all made mistakes on this TOD, and we're going to correct them as we get through it, talking about 6,000 lots is something we can do down the road. We're talking about a business owner that's been here for several years, at one time was the number-one Taco Bell in the country, he wants to continue to invest, continue to employ people here, now let's take now Foods, staff did what they were supposed to do and told them they couldn't do it, it came before the council, we changed it, now they're employing 180 people in that, in that place, and we weren't looking for more than 100. But I, I think by changing this, this, this part of the corridor right here is the right thing to do for this business owner, and then we can look at the other 6,000 lots when we get it later on. I mean, we're going to have other instances where we have businesses where they can't afford, where they can't do the bill-to portion of the, the TOD requirements, that's what was with non-Food, or now Foods, that's why we looked at the Vista corridor.
Same with Maverick.
And Maverick. So I'm in favor of doing this.
Questions, who else, anything, you got anything else, Tim, Armando?
No, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Okay, I move to direct staff to initiate, to initiate the necessary amendments and rezoning to remove the subject parcel from the TOD corridor.
Do you have a second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item nine point five, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Nine point six, consideration and possible approval to utilize $586,464.64 of approved F-15, fiscal year '15 CIP budget in 15-1,000 signal HVAC upgrades to fund change order number one for the Alf Sorenson Nattatorium renovation project. one for the Alf Sorensen Naterium renovation project. Go ahead, Joel.
All right.
Ties around, we've got ties everywhere today, I love this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Brian Kason, Capo Projects Manager for City of Sparks, as of today.
Congratulations, officially your first day.
First day.
Look at his first item.
Yeah. Fire, my fire. Essentially, there's two items that I'm presenting on this one agenda. The first item is possibly approving the utilization of $586,464 of approved CIP budget from the City Hall HVAC project to fund this change order, which is the second part. Basically, the second part is change order number one for Alf Sorensen Naterium renovation to Frank Lepary Construction in the amount of $586,464. As a brief summary, I mean, essentially, the original project was to improve ventilation, improve the ceiling and the lighting and all that sort of thing in the existing pool area, because there has been moisture problems in the past. With this, as they opened up the ceiling, they had found much more deterioration than they originally had thought from what they had checked out originally for the design. And basically, the plywood is rotting away up on the upper portions of the roof, which causes us to essentially have to remove the roof and remove the underlayment and the plywood and replace all the plywood. And we were coming back in with marine-grade plywood, and the existing metal roof is not able to be saved whenever they're doing this, because it's all a standing seam metal roof that's, each seam is continually cramped, and as they're pulling it up, it's going to get all bent and destroyed and everything. So, essentially, $380,000 of this change order is removal and replacement of the roof, and then there's an additional $125,000 of force account that we've added in there, because as they're removing the roof, there's some unforeseen conditions that may occur, and some additional venting that we're possibly going to look into as they're doing the roof. And so, essentially, that's the end of my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Brian, Mr. Schmidt.
Brian, since this deterioration, most of it took place the last five years, what are we going to do on the new roof to keep an eye on it?
The new roof, well, we're putting marine-grade plywood in there, we're sealing the roof, the underside of the roof, or the ceiling, with basically, it's a moisture-resistant material that we're going to spray up there, and then also, we're going to put some moisture sensors in there so that we can, because we're already doing a VCS control system on the ventilation system, which was included in the original project. And with that system, it'll basically give you alarms, and you can monitor the moisture and all that stuff in the ceiling, and if there's any higher-than-normal moisture problems, then we'll have to take a look at it. But hopefully, our thought is, the original project is going to take care of this ventilation problem and help us not have to come back to this in the future.
Does the alarm, if it goes off, does it kick on fans, or what does it do?
That's what we're looking into, possibly doing some mushroom fence or fans that have motors in them that essentially, it would kick it on if there's a certain, it goes above a certain moisture level, and then they would kick on.
Okay, great. Take care. Anyone else?
They kicked me out.
Go ahead. Mr. Lawson.
So, how many people go through this facility?
On average, there's about 7,500 people a month that use the facility, and it kind of fluctuates throughout the year, but it's a very well-used facility. I mean, it's definitely beneficial to the community.
And this total project with this change order is going to be, total on this thing will be what, 1 point?
1.2 million, roughly.
Just basically doubling the cost.
Just value, yeah.
This is a hard decision.
Yeah.
Because I know, you know, we've got a city hall that's in bad shape here, too, that needs the HVAC upgrades, that's, you know, from the 1960s.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is, is it a mold-type problem? I mean, it's something that's...
Yeah.
I mean, it's an easy decision.
There's high...
It's got to be done, or we can't use the facility, is that right?
Definitely some mold they found up in there. It's also just moisture rot. Basically, it's a rot problem, a lot of the structural members on the top part of the structure, or top part of the joists where they meet with the plywood, where the moisture builds up from condensation, that sort of thing, it's rotted down.
So, if we don't do this, we can't use the facility?
No, I mean, this is essentially, has to be done in order to use the facility, because, and the plywood is a major thing, like I'm talking, like I said, you look up at the ceiling, and the plywood is literally rotted away, and you can see the underlayment.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two points is that, you know, you either approve this, or you shut the building down, one of the two.
Correct.
There are no options here. Whatever money you've spent already for remodel is just money that's spent, you'll never get back, because your building's up. You're not going to use a building unless you spend this money, so it's really one of those items that we have to ask, do we want to continue having a swimming pool there? And the number of people I've talked to about this project there, that would be hard, you know, there's a lot of people who use that facility, and that would be, we hear about it.
Yes.
The second portion, I want to make sure everybody understands, is this is the money that's been set aside for years for City Hall HVAC replacement. That's, we've been probably 10 years working on trying to get HVAC in the City Hall, taking care of it, but this is taking half of our money, or more than half of our money away from the City Hall, so we're going to be working for a long time to get that problem fixed, too. So, every employee that works in City Hall is going to be paying for this problem for a long time to come.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to utilize a $586,464.64 of approved fiscal year CIP budget in 15-1,000 City Hall HVAC upgrades to fund change order number one, Alf Sorensen renovation project B. I move to approve change order number one for the Alf Sorensen project bid number 1314-015, PWP WA 2014-098 to Frank Lepary Construction.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve 9.6 outline. My staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passing down to sleep. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
9.7, consideration and possible action on a business impact statement prepared pursuant to NRS 237.090 to address the proposed impact of an amendment to Title V of the Sparks Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses, Taxes, and Regulations by adding a new chapter 5.80 entitled Medical Marijuana Establishments. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. Before you today is a business impact statement prepared pursuant to NRS 237090. This is related to the business licensing ordinance and fees that will be under consideration at your next meeting. This next agenda item is the first reading for that ordinance. Essentially, because the city is implementing a new fee or proposing to implement a new fee, a business impact statement is required. Staff prepared a questionnaire. We sent that questionnaire out to over 1,800 folks. We were fortunate enough to have the help of the state, both the Department of Public and Behavioral Health, as well as the Department of Taxation, that helped us get that survey out to interested parties. We did receive six responses back. Two of those responses stated that the implementation of the fees and the licensing regulations would not have any adverse impact. Three of those responses essentially referenced NRS requirements and did not appear to relate to anything in the city's proposed code. And then, the last one suggested that the city consider a flat fee. The fee was based on how the city collects other business licensing fees. The fee in particular for cultivation facilities, it's a base fee of $3,000 per year, plus $1 for each $1,000 in gross receipts or a portion thereof in excess of $10,000, and that would be quarterly. The, for production in edible marijuana products, that would all be the same as for the cultivation. For the dispensary, the base fee is $5,000, and it's $5 for each $1,000 in gross receipts or a portion thereof in excess of $10,000, and that, again, is quarterly as well. You can, you'll note in the impact analysis itself, there is a, there is a table which will give you an idea of the revenue to be generated. Because we don't know exactly how much revenue will be generated, these are simply guesstimates based on certain amount of gross receipts with the proposed fees in place. So, if, for example, a dispensary grossed $100,000 in receipts, in gross receipts, the base fee $5,000, percentage of gross receipts would be $300, so their total fee would be $5,300. And that would be yearly. So, if you divide that by four, that would be what we would get quarterly. We've also included in your staff report a comparison of the City of Sparks and how our fees compare to fees of other jurisdictions. Clark County, City of Las Vegas, City of Henderson, and City of North Las Vegas each propose an application fee. Washoe County and the cities of Sparks and Reno do not. Sparks, Las Vegas, and Henderson each have an annual licensing fee and annual sales fee based on gross receipts. Reno has a sales fee of $5,000 per quarter. And, you know, what you can see is that our proposed fee structure is similar to that of other jurisdictions in the state, and also similar to how we license other businesses, such as liquor license, for example. Staff has concluded that the proposed amendment to Title V does not impose a direct and significant economic burden upon a business, nor does it directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. The proposed ordinance complements the strict regulatory structure set forth in Nevada revised statutes and ensures the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city. The fees imposed for the application and licensing of medical marijuana establishments are necessary to at least partially recover costs associated with the regulation and oversight of this industry. Staff recommends that you accept this business impact statement and enter a finding in compliance with NRS 237080 and 090, that the business impact statement was properly prepared, and that the proposed ordinances do not impose a direct and significant economic burden upon a business, nor directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Thompson. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for, you know, I think this is required by the state law, right, correct?
Correct.
Any other fees that we impose, though, we're not required to do a impact statement, raising taxes, raising fees, or anything else like that, but this has been done because the state imposed it.
Correct. There are some exceptions. This is not one of them.
And my big question comes back to, how much does this cost the taxpayers? You know, if I'm, you know, we've talked about, everybody's trying to figure out what their annual cost is going to be, and I don't see anything in the report here that's saying what we anticipate the city to spend for this new industry. You know, early reports on where $150,000 to $200,000 a year was going to cost the city to embrace this new industry. There's no other fees or anything we collect on this business at all.
That's correct.
So, let's just say that we generate $10 million in dispensary sales, $10 million in cultivated production, and $10 million in testing. So, let's say we do a $30 million a year business in this business. I see we're going to collect about $80,000 in revenue for that $30 million combined business. And so, what percentage are we going to recoup for what it costs the city to manage this business?
Frankly, Councilman Schmidt, we don't know. That is one of the million-dollar questions, if you will, is that we don't know exactly what impact it's going to have. As stated in the staff report, these fees are intended to help cover those costs, but we don't know what percentage that may or may not be at this point in time.
So, we could really look at that, we're only going to cover 10% of the cost of the new business company, and it's actually going to cost the taxpayer 90% to operate in their city.
That is a possibility.
And my question is, you know, and nobody has that answer that I've heard of what it's going to cost. Nobody has the answer of what the anticipated sales are going to be. That's not public knowledge that they're sharing with us. So, my question is, as a city, what are we doing to make sure we capture all of our time and our costs for next year at this time, or within a year of being, we can sit down and say, "It's cost the police department $120,000 this year, it cost licensing, you know, $5,000." How are we going to program to set up so we have that answer? So, the next time we're looking at this question, we see, we can say, "Well, it's going to cost us a quarter of a million dollars for this amount of business, how do we recoup our cost on it?"
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask you? It is intense staff, and with the teamwork that's been done to this point, this has been a question we've asked ourselves, and because we don't know the volume, we don't know what will be approved by the state to actually operate in the City of Sparks, that's where we have a concern with it. One of the things that we will be doing, we know that we'll be required to do certain business activities as it's required by the state law, we'll have inspections by environmental control, fire, police, dealing with normal business activities, plus the police are being brought in because of this industry for security purposes, both physical and personal security. And so, we'll be keeping track of that information as best we can to get a feeling for what we're going to do. We could very easily, with a small number of businesses and large sales volume, we might actually collect more than it would take. At this point, we know that there will only be two dispensaries. We know that has the potential for very limited activity to it. The question will be the other facilities that the state provides. Being that they're very similar to manufacturing concerns, we don't expect there to be a large amount of time and effort being spent. But until we have a year or so under our belts, we won't know. So, what we wanted to do is to take our best guess at providing us some manpower dollars that we pay for tying what we're using currently. And then, we do have the ability under statute that if we start accumulating costs and see that we're burning more costs than we're getting in the fee, we could come back to the council and seek changes to that fee as long as we follow the rules under NRS.
Tim, what other businesses do we follow as far as how much it costs the police and fire? Do we track casinos to see how much, how many calls we make to casinos? And do we check convenience stores to see how many drunks we get out of those places, or whatever? I don't see this as any different than any other business, other than it's marijuana, obviously, drugs we're talking about. But we don't track any other businesses to see what it costs us to do, for those businesses to have public safety and so on and so forth? Do we track any of those?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you that there's a lot of businesses that we don't track, that the public assumes those cost for on an average basis. The problem is, though, that I look at this as an unfunded mandate. You know, the state basically told us, "We're going to have this," or at least that's what I'm getting from staff, "If we don't do this, they have the right to come in and do it." So, it's an unfunded mandate. So, I think the citizens need to know that the state has put a mandate, which should most of the revenues go into the state, not to local government. We get to put up with the problems, all the taxes, the sales taxes and things generally go to the state on this thing. So, I think because it's an unfunded mandate, it needs to be monitored. We need to know, be able to know that if we've got to raise taxes on the citizens $100,000 next year because the marijuana industry came in, state told us we had to do that. I think that's valuable information to be able to recoup and pass along.
Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt. You know, I think the way it works now is, you're always operating after the year, and you, whatever business you have, you pay a base license fee, and then projected what you're going to do next year.
what you're going to do next year, a dollar and a thousand, or whatever happens to be. So you've got a history that you know about what they're going to do. Is that right?
I, I believe we would have a history.
So, so after the first year, they report their sales and they get taxed for it. And when you go to bill them for a business license next year, base license, $80, whatever it happens to be, and then a dollar per thousand over that from last year. Right? And that's added into your business license.
Correct. Plus, there's the, the, the base fee. In the case of a dispensary, it's $5,000.
Yeah, and I said $80, but $5,000, whatever it must be. So there, you may, you may be behind a year, but you're going to make it up. I don't know if you're going to make it up, but they're going to be pretty well dead on the following year.
I think we will have a better idea after a year what the demand for service will be, and if necessary, we can adjust the fees as Mr. Driscoll pointed out.
Can we do that on a six-month basis with this business? Just for the heck of it?
Three months for now.
Huh?
We do it on a three-month basis.
You can do it on a, we're not doing it on a three-month.
And our ordinance calls, if business change, you go from 12 months to three months. We're going to collect every three months.
Correct. So the proposal is...
No, no, they're going to pay every three months, but we can change it. Can we look at it in six months and say, hey, they're doing, they're doing better than we thought? Is that something we can do?
I believe you can, yes.
Anyone else? Questions? Anything else, Tim? Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I think you'd, you'd be well advised to just see how this goes at first and why you want to raise rates. You're going to have to be careful about that. The mayor touched on something that kind of smacks to, to me, anyway, of equal protection. You cannot charge businesses more money simply because there are more calls for services there. We do not raise the taxes in neighborhoods simply because we have more calls for service in that particular neighborhood. We do not charge people to go and put out a fire. And they're getting our services, but we do not increase the financial obligations to the city simply because some areas, some people, some businesses use our services more. So that's the cautionary note I would simply throw out. If, if they're making more money, we want a bigger cut. Now we're getting into taxation. So there's some fine legal lines I think you want to look at here before we, and I understand Councilman Schmidt's concerns that this is an unfunded mandate, but the way we deal with that, I think, should be thought out carefully and appropriately in order for us to go forward on any increases despite the calls for services that, that may occur. That being said, I think staff has done an outstanding job on this, and they've really done their homework, and I think they should be commended, especially in an area that we have really no history in.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, anything else, Tim?
No, sir.
Okay, looking for a motion. That's a different one. Mr. Smith?
I move to accept the business impact statement and find the business impact statement was properly prepared, and the adoption of the ordinance amending Sparks Municipal Code Title V does not impose a direct and significant economic burden upon a business, nor directly restrict the, the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.7 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Tim, appreciate it. Okay, 9.8 is a first reading.
Bill number 2679, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Sparks Municipal Code, licensing of medical marijuana establishments and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill number 2679. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 25, 2014. 9.9 is a first reading.
Bill number 2680, an ordinance amending Chapter 7.16, nuances including the addition of a property preservation section in Chapter 20.35, recreational vehicle storage of the Sparks Municipal Code, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill number 2680. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 25, 2014. 9.10 is a first reading.
Bill number 2681, a general ordinance rezoning grow property owned by Golden Triangle LLC from A40 Agricultural to NU D New Urban District on a site totaling 43.8 acres in size, located at 6,000 Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill number 2681. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 25, 2014. 9.11.
Bill number 2682, a general ordinance rezoning grow property owned by Method Art Corporation from R5, multiple family residential to PO Professional Office on 1.6 acres generally located at 2405, 2415, and 2435 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill number 2682. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 25, 2014. Moving on to public hearing items, 10.1, consideration and approval of Resolution Number 3261, authorizing an inter-fund loan to the Community Development Block Grand Entitlement Fund and/or the Community Development Block Grand Fund and/or the Sparks Grants and Donations Fund from the General Fund as needed.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I'm Debbie Kinder, accounting manager for the record. This is a resolution and a public hearing approval to comply with some NRS changes that were made approximately three or four years ago. And for the last three years, our auditors have written us up for being in violation of the NRS, which says, and then I come to you with a plan of corrective action, and the action pretty much says we can't correct it because they're grant funds that operate on a spend first, get reimbursed later. And the NRS says if you go negative cash for even one day, then that fund has participated in an inter-fund loan from somewhere else. And without a public hearing first, that inter-fund loan is in violation of NRS. So bringing this resolution forward to you so that you could consider, it'd probably be easier if I read what you have to consider so I don't mislead anything. NRS says that inter-fund loans, before making them, the governing body, the local government, must determine in a public hearing that a sufficient amount of money is available for the loan, that the money is not restricted as to its use, that the loan of the money will not compromise the economic viability of the fund from which the money is loaned, and they must establish at the public hearing the amount of time that the money will be on loan, the terms and conditions for repaying, and the rate of interest to be charged. So the resolution attached says, at the discretion of the finance director, when these grant funds go negative, we could issue from the general funds unrestricted cash up to $300,000 for no more than 30 days, interest-free. The reimbursements are generally no more than a week before we have them, and then we're negative 74% of the time, and one grant fund in particular, we've been negative from $5 to about $300,000. The $300,000 occurrences are rare, they're your large CDBG projects. And that concludes my presentation. I believe you have to open up to public hearing, and I haven't done public hearings, so that part's great.
Thanks, Debbie. Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Debbie, tell me what grants are out there that we can't collect in advance, that we have to spend the money before you actually get it, to get the money?
All of the CDBG, and then the grant fund that is negative 74% of the time is the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and it's the HUD grants. So we spend the money on the approved items and then request electronically reimbursement within a week.
How many times have we been turned down to be reimbursed for the amount that we asked for?
We haven't. Not in my recollection, we have not been turned down.
And there's no other way to handle this situation with HUD, getting the money upfront before we go spend it? I mean, I don't know if anybody notices or not, but our federal government is broke. You know, I'd hate to be writing checks, yeah, my account, with the guarantee that the federal government's going to pay you back for something like that, you know?
I hadn't considered approaching them for prepayments. I think that they would probably be against it. We have to meet the grant requirements, and the spending of it is part of that requirement. We could look into it.
I mean, I, I understand what you're doing, because we're, you know, we're writing checks that aren't any good, you know? We cover them from other accounts, and that's, that's not good to do. We don't want our credit to be hurt, but same time, I, you know, you know, that's why I've asked that we started weeding ourselves off, off these grants, because, you know, there's going to come a day when they're, they're not going to be paid. And, you know, it's going to be taking longer and longer. And I think, I remember some CDBG here not too long ago, it was like six, eight months out that it took us to get, recoup that money. But maybe I'm picking the wrong, the wrong fund or something, but...
I haven't had any CDBG. I'm straining my brain to think which grant could have been. We do have some highway grants that are passed through from the state, and they take a little bit longer. They're not managed through the grant funds that don't have any cash in them, they're managed through the capital projects funds that have some cash. So we don't, we don't suffer from that negative ending fund balance at the end of the year that we get written up from there. Most of the direct awards from the federal government, and all of them, I have not experienced any. The past through awards seem to take a little longer, but we're going through another agency to comply.
So just, we just approved a grant here for the police department. We're going to, they got to go out and buy and pay for the things that they're going to do before they get reimbursed for it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, and I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to make a motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 3261 to authorize an inter-fund loan to grant funds of the City of Sparks.
Do I have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 10.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Okay, 11.1, 11.1. Public hearing, PCN 14014, consideration and possible action on a request for tentative and final approval of an amendment to a planned development handbook, Miramonte, to revise development standards by modifying the front yard setback requirements, including reducing the front yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet from the front property line to any livable space or a side load garage. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, couldn't have said it better myself.
There's a lot, there's a lot more to say, but I figured I'd let you say it.
Thank you again, Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. This is a public hearing request to consider tentative and final approval of a, an amendment to the Miramonte Plan Development Handbook. Ryder Homes, who is currently constructing homes up in Village 4, Unit 4, they are asking to alter some of the setback requirements in an attempt to try and stay competitive in the market and offer floor plans and, and homes that, that folks are looking to, to purchase. The, the first would be to reduce the front yard setback from 15 feet to 10 feet. Typically, in a subdivision, the front yard setback from livable space is 15 feet. It would be 20 feet to a garage. And so they are asking to reduce that from 15 feet to 10 feet to livable space or, or a side-load garage. And then in conjunction with that, they are requesting that the setback to the garage actually be reduced from 20 feet to 18 feet. However, the driveway length will remain a minimum of 20 feet. The reason behind that is, in some areas of the development, the property line is actually about two, two and a half feet behind the back of the sidewalk. And so it would allow the, the home to be placed as much forward as possible to give the largest usable backyard possible. And so in doing that, they could actually reduce that front setback to the garage down to 18 feet and, and, and still have a 20-foot driveway because of, of that difference. The, the, the next change would be to allow porches to encroach five feet into that front yard setback, and then increasing the maximum coverage of lot by structure from 45 to 55% in the SF6 designation. So the, the applicant took this from the city's design standards manual, wanting to encourage walkable communities and pushing the, the porch forward. And keep in mind, this has to be a usable porch. I think the minimum requirement is 36 square feet in order to utilize this standard. And then, and then to increase the coverage of lot by structure from 45 to 55%. Typical R16 is 40% coverage. In this handbook, it was 45. They were given a little more flexibility, and now they want to increase that to 55%. In, in working with the applicant on this, they could suffice with about 51%. However, staff was concerned about a situation where the developer actually used all 51% and would in essence give a future property owner the inability to construct any kind of patio cover or any, any structure of that nature that would count towards that. And so staff actually agreed to 55% as being more appropriate, just so that we didn't have that particular situation. In most instances, the, the homes won't get anywhere close to the 55% or 51%, but there are some instances where that would be the case. Staff was able to make all the findings. We'll insert those into the record, particularly finding PD 21. Staff finds that the proposed modification will maintain the integrity of the approved Miramonte Plan Development. There are no changes in the land use or master plan for the plan development. It is staff's belief the proposed changes will help to enhance the development as a whole by providing additional flexibility, which will in turn provide for more housing options as discussed in, in PD Findings 1 and 4. Therefore, the proposed changes will further the interests of the city and its residents and preserves the integrity of the plan. Staff is recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. Smith?
Tim, it sounds like they want to make, build bigger homes instead of bigger backyards, the increase in the size of the house.
Yes, yes, I think, I think in, in order to stay competitive, I think the market really is dictating single-floor plans at this point. And so this would allow the developer the, the option to move the house around on the lot a little bit, create a, a larger backyard, which is another amenity that, that folks are looking for, and then also allow some design opportunities where perhaps there's a, a patio that is covered by the roof structure of the house, as well as the porch element at the front.
So the 51 and 55% is the, the building itself?
Correct. It's the footprint of the, of the building.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Applicant want to say anything? Come on up, please. And I'll open the public hearing when you're done.
Good afternoon. For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have John Schroeder also in the audience. And I think Tim did a great job of, of explaining the changes that we were looking for. We've worked hard with Tim, kind of back and forth on some of these issues. The real intent is to get some interest in the street skate, street scape up there and comply with the city's design standards. This provides more flexibility. It is allowing for some bigger units while maintaining the backyard is kind of what we're looking for and to, to bring the, the porch features up to the street. So with that, if you have any questions, either one of us... So with that, if you have any questions, either one of us would be available.
Questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Melissa. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it. The public, anyone want to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for questions or action. Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I move for tentative and final approval of a request for an amendment to the Miramonte Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 14014, adopting findings PD 1 through PD 21 and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report. Because the requests include final approval, the planning commission does not recommend that the city council require a bond at this time, as stated in NRS 278A490.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve 11.1 as outlined by staff, PCN 14014. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's move on to 11.2, second reading, discussion and possible action on Bill Number 2678 and ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Section 20.56, signs to change the method for sign calculations to add regulations governing digital signs and providing other matters properly related thereto. Ms. Melby.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councils. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This request is to amend the Sparks Municipal Code 2656. The amendments add regulations on digital signs. It addresses some administrative issues that the staff has had with regulating the code. It also adds maximum sign area for all types of signs. The 25% opacity requirement we are suggesting to remove. The intent of this code amendment was to make the existing code better and easier to use, both by the sign industry and staff. In 2002, the United States District Court for the District of Nevada ordered the city to adopt a sign code that was content neutral. A content neutral sign code is a sign code which only addresses time, place, and manner. The current code does not distinguish between off-premise and on-premise signs, and the content of a sign cannot be taken into account. Four main areas of administration of the existing sign codes that have been problems are, the first one is the maximum sign area for the commercially zoned properties is based on the building frontage, and we've always had difficulties on defining what the building frontage is. The second is the maximum sign area must be calculated for the entire site, including all wall signs, monument signs, and freestanding sign. So when a tenant comes in, for example, in a shopping center and he wants to install a new sign, the entire shopping center sign area must be calculated, as opposed to just calculating the signs for that one business. The third area has been the current code requires a 25% opaque in order to encourage channel letters. This is actually a standard that has never really worked in encouraging channel letters, and the sign companies have difficulty in determining what the percent of opacity is for their signs. Also, when a sign is changed out, the city does not see that permit, so it's hard for us to regulate that. The fourth area is regulating temporary signs. The staff established a stakeholder group to work with the revised sign code. And staff has had three workshops with the sign industry, two workshops with Sparks Business stakeholders, and met with local sign advocacy groups. The draft sign code before you today includes the changes to the extent possible and comments from all of these workshops with the stakeholders. The draft sign code added new definitions for cotendency, direct lighting, digital signs, flag, gross floor area, new illumination types, interactive sign, LED signs, illuminance, new modes of operation, portable signs, and a tri-vision sign. Under prohibited sign section, the draft sign code added three new prohibited signs. The first one is no sign that imitates or resembles an official traffic signal, sign device, or other official warnings is prohibited. The second is no interactive signs are allowed, which are digital signs that propose a personal response to drivers or pedestrians as they pass that sign. The third prohibited sign is there cannot be signs on wind machines, cellular towers, or other equipment, except logos, and they cannot exceed eight square inches. In the current code, numerous tables are confusing to use because it's hard to define which regulation applies to which sign. In the draft sign code, we consolidate the tables, the various regulations of illumination, maximum sign area, and the number of signs into one table for each type of sign. The current code does not address the new sign technology and illumination. Section 2056-170F has been rewritten from what we call computer variable signs to digital signs. The proposed sign code allows digital signs in RC2, which is general commercial, industrial, tourist commercial districts, and we also propose to allow digital signs on sites in the public facilities district over 10 acres in size. The digital standards proposed allow shorter display times from current code requirements, which is actually a two-minute constant display, establishes restrictions on the maximum sign size based on the zoning district, regulates the brightness by foot candles, and includes spacing and operational standards. A constant display of eight seconds is proposed within the code with a second change time. This is the industry standard for the operation of digital signs. In C2 or general commercial and industrial, 50% of the sign must be digital, while in the tourist commercial zoning district, 75% of the sign may be digital. Monument and special freestanding signs may be entirely digital. The brightness standard that we are proposing in this draft is 0.3 foot candles above the ambient light levels, measured at a square footage of the area times 100 and the square root of that number. Using the foot candle measurement, it's easier to measure a meter and it's easier to use and calibrate the meter. Measuring nits is difficult because it is hard to get an accurate reading and also the meter is much more expensive to purchase. And lastly, using foot candles takes into account the ambient light levels, which is important or critical so that the sign can be legible. As proposed, the mode of operations prohibited for signs over 32 square feet does not permit fade, dissolve, travel, message sequencing, or scrolling, except for in our tourist commercial district. No video display flashing or blinking is permitted. The proposed distance between digital freestanding sign is 200 feet, and the distance for special freestanding signs is 3,000 feet. Digital signs can advertise more information than a static sign, so you don't need to have them as frequently placed. And also, staff looked at other communities in the United States and found that it's been a standard that with digital signs, they double the distance between the digital signs. The draft proposes to eliminate two-day temporary signs in favor of a portable sign, which is a new sign type. The portable sign cannot be larger than eight square feet and four feet tall, and only can be displayed during the business hours of that business with location restrictions. And Section B of temporary signs addresses all the other temporary signs, and temporary signs may be displayed at discretion of the property owner or management company and restricted to two per public entrance, not to exceed eight for the site. All temporary signs must receive a temporary sign permit, and the applicant will have a restricted timeframe to display the sign. The maximum size is 18 square feet, with the exception of an 80-square-foot sign for Staff would like to use the fall of this year as a period of education for the businesses in our community by handing out a flyer on temporary signs and possibly holding informational workshops. That way, we would start in January of 2015 in regulating the temporary sign section of this code. For non-conforming signs, the draft adds a non-conforming sign cannot be changed to digital sign unless it is brought into conformance with this code. There is an exception for the replacement of existing digital signs. At this time, Tim's going to address, we've received some comments, and Tim's going to address those comments.
Thank you, Karen. Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Staff has received two letters, as I believe the council has also received these two letters. The first from Saunders Outdoor Advertising and a second from Scenic Nevada. The Saunders letter essentially questions or states that the 3,000-foot spacing requirement between digital special freestanding signs, AKA billboards, is excessive. What I can tell you about the 3,000 square feet is, I think throughout this entire process of learning how to regulate the digital signs, I think the presumption has always been that digital signs are more effective, more visible than a static sign. Under that premise, as Karen mentioned, we did quite a bit of research, and in communities that have adopted standards for digital signs, it was not uncommon for those communities to actually double the distance separation. Currently, our distance separation between billboards is 1,500 feet, and so doubling that gets us to 3,000 feet. That 1,500 feet was a distance that was approved back in 2002 when the content neutral code was originally adopted. The reason why we chose to do that was to address the items two and three in the purpose statement of our ordinance, which is to maintain and enhance the aesthetic environment and the city's ability to attract sources of economic development and growth and to improve pedestrian and traffic safety. So those would be two of the purposes behind regulation of the digital sign and increasing the distance between digital billboards in particular. I think it's important to point out that when the current ordinance was adopted in 2002, it essentially made every single outdoor advertising structure in the City of Sparks Our code does not have any specific provisions for or nor does it use the term billboard. Rather, the city created a new sign type called a special freestanding sign, which is permitted on any property zoned industrial. It's a free 672 square feet of sign area. I say free because it does not come out of their allowable sign area based on their frontage or area calculation. The other item that was brought up by Saunders was staff's effort to, quote, "combine on-premise and off-premise regulations," end quote. As Karen mentioned, our code is content neutral, so we do not regulate the content of the signs. We don't determine what's on or off-premise, and that is a result of that lawsuit and the direction of the court to create a content-neutral code. The Scenic Nevada letter, they also have a concern about the distance separation. In this particular case, they would like to see it be 3,000 radial feet. Right now, the 3,000-foot separation is only on the same side of the street, so in essence, you could have two digital billboards across the street from one another. That distance separation is linear and only on the same side of the street. The proposal from Scenic Nevada would be 3,000 radial feet, so would be a radius around that digital sign where you could not have another digital sign. As with this entire process, staff has tried very hard to, again, going back to the purpose statement, is to balance the rights of businesses and individuals to convey messages through signs against the aesthetics and safety hazards that come from the proliferation of sign clutter. And so what we have here is two competing points of view, and I can tell you that Karen and I, along with other staff members, spent a great deal of time vetting each and every comment and each and every section of this code to try and determine what was best on the whole for the community, taking into account aesthetics, taking into account how we can administer the code, and whether or not a standard would actually make it easier to enforce or understand a certain sign provision. And so staff is recommending that we maintain that 3,000-foot separation distance for those reasons that I've mentioned, as they pertain to special freestanding signs. The other item in the Scenic Nevada letter references the lighting restrictions, and Karen touched on this. Really, it comes down to how are we going to measure the brightness of the sign? You can use foot candles, you can use nits. I can tell you that we've gone back and forth, probably a half dozen times, on which one we were going to use. At the end of the day, we settled on .3 foot candles above ambient because, number one, it takes into account the ambient light conditions that measuring in nits would not. It also is a much easier measurement to obtain. The knit meter is difficult to use and expensive. The foot candle meter was still a couple hundred dollars. A knit meter would have been a couple thousand dollars. And again, it takes into account the ambient light conditions. So at night, with low ambient light conditions, you would see the sign much dimmer, whereas at night during the sun, the sign would be brighter to account for those lighting conditions. The letter references, a standard billboard at night normally measures between 60 and 100 nits. Again, that doesn't take into account the ambient light conditions. If there's little ambient light, who's to say that even if it was 100 nits, that may be too bright for the ambient light conditions? And so, again, Karen and I really took a lot of time learning about this, and we believe that it's in our best interest and the right thing to do to use the foot candles at .3 foot candles above ambient. Karen and I went out last Thursday night to take some measurements. We worked with YESCO on the digital sign located at McCarran Auto Body, and as a result of that, I think that sign is much dimmer now than it was previously. I think that the readings showed that that sign was, on average, 1.1 foot candles above the ambient light condition, and so that sign was adjusted to get that down to no more than the .3 above ambient. That seemed to make a significant difference. We did have a conversation with a neighbor that appeared to be impacted by the sign, and his comment was, "I think I can live with that." We also took the time to look at some other digital signs to see how they compared, and so it is a relatively simple process. We take the square footage of the digital sign, we go through the calculation that Karen mentioned. That will tell you how far away from the sign we take our readings, and then using the meter, we take those readings. The other item in the letter is kind of a blanket, other problems with digital billboards. Certainly, there are a lot of opinions. There are a lot of studies out there. I think the conclusion of the studies typically depended on who paid for them, what was actually being studied, as to what the outcome was. I think Karen and I took a practical... I think Karen and I took a practical approach. Karen did quite a bit of research on this, and I think that what we've proposed to you in this ordinance is appropriate.
Okay. Anything else? Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have to stay from this.
Adam, since I am in the sign business, I do it for YESCO.
That's a good sign. Mr. Smith?
No pun intended.
None.
Currently, as the ordinance or whatever it is we have stands, if you have a billboard that's already erected, we can't stop them from turning it into a digital?
You know, this is kind of a, maybe a little ambiguous. You know, the section says, probably best to just find it and read it. Did you do the strikeout on that, or? So what it says is, "Neither the sign nor supporting structure may be increased in size or height, nor may there be an addition or enhancement to the structure that increases the visual effect or increases the impact." And so what we've interpreted as a staff is, to change to a digital sign, you're increasing the visual effectiveness of the sign, and that's the position that we've taken. And so in taking that position, then, I think the answer to your question would be, no, we would not allow them to convert a sign to a digital sign.
Could they apply for a permit to make that a digital sign?
Potentially. The example that I will use is the digital sign that's at the tank farm adjacent to I-80. In that particular situation, it was a non-conforming outdoor advertising structure. Clear Channel came in, they applied for a permit, they were able to demonstrate that that sign actually met the requirements of our current code, so it met the 1,500-foot separation requirement, and we could actually classify it at that point as a special freestanding sign. They were permitted to upgrade that sign to a digital display.
Well, what I'm getting at is, the number-one point of contention that I've seen is the 3,000 feet, and the comments were that it benefits a bigger company as opposed to a smaller company. If a bigger company has more billboards, and they decide to put this billboard here, this guy here can't do it now because this company did it.
Sure.
Is that right?
Right.
Even though they're 1,500 feet apart, as it is now?
Potentially. I think what we've done is, we're maintaining that 1,500 feet between static billboards and any other billboard.
But we're only talking digital here.
Correct. And so, you know, again, assuming that the digital signs' visual effectiveness are more effective, our position was, and again, looking back at other jurisdictions, and in fact, there was even a court case from Michigan where somebody challenged the distance separation, and the court held that it was reasonable. Similar situation.
Which was, what was reasonable?
That the distance separation was reasonable.
The 1,500 or the 3,000?
Well, in this particular case in Michigan, it was 2,000 feet between, and then they increased that to 4,000 feet between digital signs, and so that was something that the court held as not, as being reasonable. And so in this case, we took a similar approach where we just simply doubled what the distance separation is now, which was not uncommon in many other jurisdictions across the country, where we looked at those ordinances.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is, I don't like the 3,000-foot mark. Now, if you, in my opinion, if you want to put that in the ordinance, put it for new signs that haven't been erected yet. But the ones that are up there, and these people own them, and they want to change them to digital, and if they can do it, they should be able to do that. If I own a billboard company with billboards all over the place.
At the 1,500 distance separation?
Yeah. That's like it is now, and then if you want to change it for the future, any additional signs that are built, make it 3,000.
And I would suggest that staff would have a difficult time keeping track of that.
Then I would say leave it at 1,500.
Any more questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What's the value of a billboard? I mean, in terms of dollars, so that's a property, piece of property, so there's property tax to collect on it, right?
That's correct. They collect taxes.
They collect taxes.
I think that's part of the assessed value of the property.
So what's the assessed value of a billboard? Just a standard, non-digital billboard?
I have no idea, honestly. I've never checked that out.
So we don't know what the value is?
But I do know that from going from a static sign to a digital sign, the revenue for the sign company can increase by tenfold, but I don't know if that has, I don't know if the assessor is actually assessing a digital sign at a different property value than a static billboard sign. I don't know.
Should that be information we should know? On what revenues are property taxes and stuff come into the city on base, I mean, you know, let's say revenues increase 10 times, I would imagine that the cost of putting a digital up is probably substantially higher than putting a standard billboard up.
But the property values is determined by the assessor's office and not the city of Sparks.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Yeah, me a lot. Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing, Adam, so I'll open it to public for comment, and I have some comment cards. Whoops. Okay, each of you that come up and speak will have three minutes. We have Mark Counting.
Courtney.
Pardon me? Courtney, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and council persons. My name is Mark Counting. I am with Saunders Outdoor, and I just, Tim read the letter that I didn't know my corporate office had written, so I do appreciate that. I do appreciate also Tim's time. I did meet with Tim with regards to this, and I appreciate him taking time and also Karen with some email correspondence, so I do thank them for that. Couple of things I'd like to address, specifically based on listening to the comments, and both from council, the council members, and also from the aforementioned folks. The comment that just came up was revenue increase of 10 times on a digital sign. That may be the case in certain signs in certain places. It all depends on the location of the sign, it all depends on the ability to generate, to get people to advertise on the sign, and what those rates may or not be. With a digital sign, you have multiple areas that you have to get covered. A lot of times, those end up being public service boards, et cetera, so the revenue isn't a slam dunk, and it's not a guarantee that you're going to generate increased revenue, so I wanted to address that right off the bat. Also, it's a significant investment on our part to create a digital board, and we evaluate the locations very thoroughly before we would even attempt to come forward to request a permit or to do something like that. I also am against the 3,000-square-foot distance. Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith put it very well. We have a digital bill, or, excuse me, static billboards that are in place. It's very unlikely we would replace all of those with digital, again, for the aforementioned reasons. It's very expensive, and I might not necessarily be able to fill those boards with the revenue I need to pay for that cost. The other question I had was, and it relates back to Mr. Councilman Smith's comment, if there's three static boards in a row, how do you determine who gets the digital board? Is the first one to the table? Is it whoever has the, you know, first one there with a permit gets the board, and the other people are aced out? That's kind of an open question that I have, because I'm not sure about that. And then I'm asking for a clarification. The 3,000 feet on the street in a linear format, for example, along the freeway, if I'm on, let's say Vista Boulevard and Sparks Boulevard, and the motel that's right there has a digital board on its face, it's on the same side of the freeway as I am, but it may be 300 feet from me, am I then precluded from having a digital board at that? Does that count as part of the 3,000 feet? So that's another question that I have. And forgive me, I don't know if those questions get answered in this format, or if I state my case and then go and sit down. Not sure.
State your case, and then have, we'll take those up when you come back, when Tim comes back up.
Okay. I would request that the spacing remain the same at the 1,500 feet, and other than the value of other discussions they had about lumens, et cetera, I have no issues with that. I just would like the clarification on the issues that I've asked, and also that they leave the spacing the same.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, for the record, I'm Tom Weatherby. I worked for Young Electric Sign Company for 21 years. I've been to, I believe, all the meetings that Karen and Tim have conducted for the industry and one for the commercial public. They've done a great job. This code is by far better than what you have. There are a couple of things that I would comment on. One, they have improved the code by taking the actual geographic square footage of a letter, let's say, rather than boxing it off like a cabinet. So that's going to allow most businesses to have more signage than they would. But on the other hand, they've also reduced the percentage based on frontage or gross floor area that you have, so it's kind of a wash there, but it's a step in the right They've virtually eliminated any video usage of digital signage, which is one of the main purposes of digital signage, where Karen made a statement that the industry standard is eight seconds, and then you change. That's the industry standard for outdoor advertising, for billboard advertising. To my knowledge, there is no state standard for on-premise advertising, and what this code does is projects that off-premise change time of eight seconds onto your on-premise signs as well. Even our highway signs change at a rate of about two seconds for the orange signs you see on the freeway for traffic control. So the brain can read a message in about a second and a half, so I feel like eight seconds is too long for the on-premise sign to be held with no fades, no dissolves, no intermittent type of illumination. The other thing I've got an issue with is still the nonconformance. I have several customers in Sparks who have existing signs, and the way this is written, "An existing nonconforming digital sign may be replaced or enhanced as long as the changes will increase the level of conformance within this chapter." Does that mean it has to come down in size to the new standards? Does it have to come down in height? We don't know, and it's not specified here. We're told that, yes, we're going to work with them any way they can to allow that, and I truly feel like Tim and Karen want to do that, but five years from now, if they're not here, and you've got a real hardliner that says no to all these. So I would like to see that firmed up a little bit as to what is allowed as a replacement. And I'm specifically speaking of the larger signs like the Nugget, like the Alamo, and these type of signs, which would also affect some of your smaller businesses that may or may not have some. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Lori Ray, and I'm here representing Scenic Nevada. We're a nonprofit dedicated to the preservation of scenic beauty and community character, principally through sign control. I'm here today, actually, in support of this ordinance, and we do have a few exceptions, and Tim did a great job, as the other gentleman said, of outlining our exceptions. So first of all, I'd like to apologize for coming so late in the process. We are an all-volunteer organization, and it's difficult for us to attend everything that we need to attend to try to enforce our mission or follow our mission. So we weren't here for the planning commission, and we weren't here for the first reading. I apologize to you and to staff for that. So I'd also like to thank staff again for the sign code update. We think it's a difficult task to balance the community aesthetic and the business and commercial interests that they had to do, and we're also, and also they had to provide public safety at the same time, so we think they did a really, really great job. So the third thing I wanted to talk about was our letter, and just outline our requests again, which Tim did, and that is, we're still concerned with the lighting, the dwell time, and the lack of separation we think to residential properties. We also are concerned about the 3,000 linear feet spacing, and for the reasons that Tim also mentioned, that if they're across the street from each other, we think it creates a public hazard. There's something that scientists describe, it's a, that human beings, from the time that we were hunter-gatherers, always look in our peripheral vision to see light or flashes of movement, and so that, we're hardwired as human beings to do that. And so if you're driving down the freeway or a street, or a big street with digitals on either side of you, it might create the hazard that we're thinking it. And so that's why we were hoping for 3,000 radial feet separation, and you have 2,000 radial feet in your code on the business signs or the on-premise signs, so there is precedent for that. Also, the reason why we really would like to see 3,000 radial feet is because we think digital billboards are a safety hazard. We think they obstruct scenic views, they overuse electricity, they can devalue property, residential property nearby. They dim the dark night skies, and they contribute to light pollution, and scientists are saying that causes a human health problem, and there are also wildlife patterns that it disrupts. Finally, billboard companies, not today, but in other days, have said that they have provided public service through their Amber Alert program. And Scenic Nevada is a member of, we're an affiliate of Scenic America, and last week I got this, the affiliates got this email from our president, Mary Tracy, and this is what she says. "Last Thursday, I received an Amber Alert on my cellphone at 6:00 a.m. to keep a lookout for two children kidnapped one hour before. The license and card description were in my hand and the hands of thousands of others. Long before any billboard operator ever knew what happened, the message spread like wildfire. It was on the radio, TV, and internet. No billboards." One last sentence.
Go ahead and finish it.
Thank you. "This Amber Alert argument is a desperate attempt to build legitimacy for a dinosaur that is a distraction, an energy guzzler, and a nuisance." Last request would be, if you do change the billboard ordinance today, would you come back for a first reading? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm late.
Sure, sorry.
I was at a meeting, and I apologize.
No problem. Just here, just hand it to me, that's right. Just state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Ray. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm an attorney in Reno. My last name is spelled W-R-A-Y. I have been counsel for Scenic Nevada in various litigation matters involving different agencies. Recently, I was involved in a lawsuit with Saunders Outdoor on the same side involving the city of Reno, where Saunders Outdoor and Scenic Nevada both were attacking an ordinance passed by the city of Reno. So I'm somewhat familiar with the ordinances and what happens here, and I wanted to let you know, it hasn't been mentioned, but as a matter of state law, in our chapters 405 and 410 of the Nevada revised statutes, billboards are a nuisance, not because I say they are, but because the state law says they are. They are a nuisance. Chapter 278 also, in Nevada revised statutes, defines them as nuisances unless the billboard is put up according to the strict standards of the state laws and the local communities. So what we draw from this is, and what I told the court and what I told NDOT when we met down with them in Las Vegas, is, please understand the important role of control when you're dealing with a nuisance. Whether you're dealing with a pig farm or a digital billboard, it's a nuisance, and you have to have strict controls to protect the public. We're not the board of directors of Clear Channel Outdoor here today. We're the board of the people of City of Sparks to protect them from something that is a nuisance. That's in the state law. When the Saunders Outdoor witness was on the stand in the trial that I had here in Reno in front of Judge Flanagan, it was not the gentleman who's here today, it was another representative there based in Utah, family business out of Utah, and he came in to testify, and he was talking about the effect of a digital sign in the communications they give to their advertisers, and what they tell their advertisers is, unlike any other electronic communication or sign- unlike any other electronic communication or sign, they can't turn us off. When they're in their cars, they are going to be distracted because we're bright, because of all the things that we do to make them look at your ad. They can't turn us off. Think about that. That's what the billboard industry says to its advertisers. They want people distracted. They don't want people watching the road. They want them watching their sign. If you're stuck at a traffic light and you have to watch three of their ads, that's the best day in the world for them. So we are trying to impress upon you how important it is to the people that they not be put in a position where they're besieged by advertising from these ugly monstrosities that they can't turn off like they can turn off their cellphone. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Can I ask a publicary ring back counsel for action or questions? Tim? I believe the gentleman, Mr. Corning, asked some couple of questions that he asked, and do you remember what they were?
I wrote down the best I could.
Could you give him answers, please?
Yeah. The first one was spacing of the signs. Do you want to pull up?
Yeah, one was spacing, and the other one is if there's three in a row, who gets it, who gets the sign?
Yeah. Go ahead. Karen's going to pull up a map that I created.
Why did it do that?
It's just on the computer.
Oh, there we go.
So on this map, what is shown are, in red, are all of the non-conforming outdoor advertising structures in the City of Sparks. The two yellow dots are the two gateway signs that are there. I included those because, for all intent and purposes, although the McCarran Auto Body sign is a gateway sign, it's a billboard. And then all of the green dots are the special freestanding signs that have been approved since this current ordinance was adopted in 2002. The blue dots are all potential locations for billboards at the 1,500 linear foot spacing requirement. This is just for the six major streets in the industrial area: Vista, Sparks, McCarran, Rock, Glendale, and Gregg. And as you can see, just on those six streets, there are 47 possible new billboard locations. This would be under our current code as well. And so if any one of those property owners that perhaps didn't have one of those blue dots located on their piece of property, if any one of those property owners wanted to erect a billboard today, under today's code, they could do so. And what that would do would impact who then could put up a billboard on the same side of the street based on that 1,500-foot separation requirement. So what we're, with the 3,000-foot separation, it's really no different than the situation that we have today under our current code requirement, even at the 1,500-foot requirement, not even considering digital signs. With that being said, if we were to change the separation requirement between digital billboards to 1,500 feet, every single one of those blue dots could be a digital billboard. Now, is that practical? Probably not, because, you know, really it's going to depend on how many, how much traffic sees the sign, and how much revenue can be generated. And, you know, that translates into whether or not a company wants to invest in a digital sign in certain locations. And so based on this, staff feels very strongly about the 3,000-foot separation. And, you know, you've heard the two competing points of view. And again, I think what our, what our position was, how do we satisfy both? How do we try to maintain, maintain, or take into account those different points of view? So, you know, that's additional reason why, why we're, we feel strongly about the distance separation. As far as the non-conforming situation, you know, a non-conforming sign is non-conforming because it doesn't meet whatever the current standards are. I understand Mr. Weatherby's point of wanting to have
Firma language.
Firma language, more specifics codified. However, that could have an effect on what staff has the ability to do. Because this is a content-neutral ordinance, part of, part of the code was to remove discretion. And I think for the most part, we have done that. However, I think we can all agree that some discretion is good, is necessary. And so this was a situation where we, as a staff, had some discretion. And so, you know, we have always taken these projects on a case-by-case basis and worked with each individual applicant, sign company, to figure out how best a sign can be modified to, a non-conforming sign, be modified in a manner that the sign gets upgraded, there's some reinvestment, but it may not meet the letter of the law, so to speak. I can tell you that the signs at Silver State Plaza were, were not very attractive signs for a very long time. And staff worked very closely with the sign company on that particular situation. Those signs were upgraded. They don't necessarily meet the letter of the law today, and I don't think that's a reasonable expectation. To require somebody to, that has a 35-foot-tall sign, to require them to lower it by five feet, I don't, my opinion, I don't consider that to be reasonable. And so what we, as a staff, do is we look for ways that, that an applicant can demonstrate to us how they are bringing the sign more into conformance. And it could be any, any standard that's in the code. And each sign is going to be non-conforming for a different reason. And so those are also factors that get taken into account when, when we do this. And so, you know, to look at codifying more specific language as to what the expectation is, I think, would actually be a detriment.
It would end up restricting and tying the staff's hands to be able to work with the applicant. If we define what, what the substandard or the non-conforming situation is.
There was one more question about if there were three signs in a row, who would get the sign? Wasn't that right, Mr. Corning?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can take these, the three red dots that are directly south of the Marina. Those are, those three billboards are operated by CBS Outdoor, so they're all the same company. But for all intent and purposes, if they were owned by three different entities, whoever came in first to get the sign would get the sign. And then there would be a 3,000-distance separation. And so if the, if the sign on the left, farthest to the west, if that, for example, were within, was within 3,000 feet of the, the Clear Channel board at the Tank Farm, then that first one would not be able to have it, but potentially the second one could. But frankly, in that particular case, they wouldn't meet the distance separation requirements under today's code, and we would not allow them to upgrade it to a digital display anyway, under, under our current code, under our current standards.
Even at 1,500 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, now, again, the Clear Channel board, because they met that distance separation, they actually, we could classify them as a special freestanding sign, and they were actually able to convert that board.
Okay. Got some more questions. Mr. Smith?
I've got a question on a different issue, so if anybody else has anything more on this. And I hope you don't mix up what I was saying with the work you guys did on this, because you worked hard on it. You did a good job, so I hope you didn't take that the wrong way.
No, not at all.
I'll talk, if somebody else's got something on this.
Mr. Addy?
Do you want me to address the rest of Mr. Weatherby's comments first?
Oh, go ahead, sure, that's fine.
He made a comment about that we are reducing the square footage of the signs. Just to clarify that, the reason is, we have split the signs. Currently in our code, the maximum sign area is for all signs on the property. So you're looking at your building sign, your wall sign, your monument sign, your freestanding signs, all the signs on the property. And the reason that we've reduced the amount, the area, is because now the standard is only for a building sign. Or there's a different standard for your freestanding sign. So they're not combined, and that's why the number is less. It comes out, we did a lot of calculations, and we randomly took businesses within the city and did calculations on them. And generally, it ended up being actually more sign area has been our, was our calculations. And so that's why the numbers are smaller. The other thing that Mr. Weatherby asked, made a comment on, was that the eight-second standard. And that there should be a difference between freestanding, the on-premise and off-premise. Again, this is a content-neutral sign code, so we have to have a standard that applies to all signs. Not, we cannot separate it out for a different standard for a different type of sign. And that's why we did a universal eight seconds.
And that was the crux of the lawsuit we had to accept.
Yes, correct.
And I would point to purpose statement number six, which is to enable the fair and consistent enforcement of these sign regulations. And so, you know, we were trying not to treat folks differently like we do today.
Okay, questions? Mr. Addy, can you do this? You want somebody to read your question? What?
No, I can do it. I'm just not supposed to.
Be careful.
Thank you. So I'm not sure if I heard the answer to the final question, which is if you had two billboards and a motel sign, does the motel sign affect the 3,000-foot spacing for the two billboards?
No.
It does not? Okay.
So freestanding signs are 200 feet apart. The special freestanding signs are 3,000 skirf, and they don't apply to each other.
Great, thank you. So I got, I became particularly interested in this issue because of two main reasons. One is because of the monument, sorry, the gateway sign located at the McCarran Auto Body location and its significant impact on the neighborhood. We'll just say that is surrounding D Street behind it. So first of all, I want to say, and I'm sorry, and then the second reason is because of the number-one complaint that I still get in my ward today, almost six years into being a city council member, is the abundance of temporary signs, primarily associated with liquor stores, but generally just the proliferation of very messy temporary signage. So I want to make sure that I know what we're doing on that. So on the YESCO sign located at McCarran Auto Body, first of all, I wanted to thank YESCO. Well, first of all, I want to thank the staff. The staff has done an amazing job trying to answer this question for me. And I really appreciate the lengths to which you have gone to do that. We had a public meeting with a display sponsored by another sign company, and frankly, it did not turn out to be all that helpful in answering questions. But staff worked with YESCO to set that sign above the McCarran Auto Body sign to the appropriate standards as it would be in this new ordinance. And I did get a chance to go out and look at that, and it is a significant improvement. So I wanted to thank YESCO for being willing to participate in that project. It really did help me to answer the question. The piece that I still am concerned about, and it was in Scenic Nevada's letter, but not quite, not addressed so far, is the unfortunate location of that sign is so close to a residence. And there's a full apartment complex right below that sign, if you haven't been there. So they had asked if there's anything within the ordinance that prohibits a sign from being located that close to a residence. We have something in here, but I don't know where it is.
I'll take the temporary sign question. Certainly.
Can I actually give you an example?
Sure.
So as I was driving here today, there's a new business on Pyramid. They have a, they have their sign on their building. They have a banner that proclaims that they're a new business. They have a now-open banner, and they have a blackboard that is touting specific products, projects, products. How would that be addressed in our sign code?
So one of the, one of the challenges of a content-neutral sign code is during an election period. And so our current code states that during an election period that any sign can be displayed on any site. And because we don't regulate content, it can have any message. And so provided that we are in an election period, frankly, there's nothing we can do.
But during a non-election period?
We can do things like if they're taller than eight feet, and they need, they need a building permit for structural analysis. We can do things if they're located in site triangles. Those are things that we can do now in, during an election period. But as far as the number of signs, there is nothing that we can do regarding that. In a non-election time, a non-election period, I think that staff, particularly our code enforcement staff, is very challenged by, by temporary signs. It's, it's one of those things where somebody sees someone else do it, and they think it's okay, and they do it, and then the problem just simply perpetuates. And, and so we've had a difficult time regulating them. And even in our current code, under those current standards, it is, it is challenging for us. And so when we looked at this, what we tried to do was allow them to some degree, but try to minimize the proliferation. And essentially, what we did was we put the responsibility back on the property owner or the property manager. So if a shopping center, which would be considered a site, has four public entrances off the right-of-way, they could have a total of eight temporary signs. Those eight signs would have to be permitted, which is what we're proposing, that they be permitted as temporary signs. The property owner or property manager would have to approve those signs and that location. And that permit would be good for a year. And so it's really up to the property owner to determine which tenants they want to allocate one of those eight signs to, for example. All we would look for as a staff is, we would go out, okay, they have four entrances, they can have eight signs. What do we have permits for? We don't have permits, now we have a violation. So it makes it easier for us to regulate from that standpoint. And then the purpose behind the portable signs is all too frequently we see A-frames or banners that are put up in landscaping and on the sidewalk or in an access aisle. You know, frequently, it impedes the pedestrian traffic from moving around on the sidewalk, for example. And so, so what we've tried to do in that case, and actually, it's important to point out that for a site, currently, a site could have only one of those today. And that just wasn't realistic. I mean, when you have multiple businesses in a shopping center that, you know, all want to have the same opportunity of putting a sign out to let folks know what their specials are. So we, we found a jurisdiction that actually did this portable sign. And so we took a look at it, and we, we made some changes so that, in a way that we felt where we could better regulate. And so, you know, basically, any business can put a sign out in front of their business, provided it's within 20 feet of their main entrance. It can't be any more than eight feet tall. It can't be in the landscaping, it can't be in the road. It can't impede pedestrian flow. But it gives them an opportunity to put their message out. And it becomes much easier then for our code enforcement staff to look. And although content-neutral, when you're looking and reading signs, you know generally what businesses they're associated with. So, you know, you can tell if a particular business may have more than one, then we can simply go in and educate them and alert them to that particular situation. So that's what we've, that's what we've done related to temporary signs.
So once this is approved, would you see an effort to go out and explain to people what is allowed and isn't allowed?
Yeah, as Karen mentioned in her presentation, because we're in an election period, and that election period doesn't end until the middle of November, what we, as a staff, would like to do is spend some time actually going out, educating, you know, finding ways to make contact with, with business owners to, to educate them, to alert them of, of the requirements of the standards. I think it's important for us to notify the property owners, because ultimately, when there's a violation, there's a violation, it's the property owner and not necessarily the business that gets a violation notice. So it's going to be important for those property owners to understand the ramifications of allowing a violation to occur on their property.
Thank you. So the residents?
Under the building sign section, we say that a building sign within 300 feet and facing directly residentially-zoned district can, is not, shall be non-illuminated. And then in the digital sign...
Say it one more time, please.
Building signs within 300 feet of or directly facing a residentially-zoned district shall be non-illuminated.
So 300 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I, I thank you for answering both of those. So I would like to go on record as, you know, I do think it's the city's right and duty to make sure that we are monitoring and regulating visual clutter, whether you want to talk about it from the safety standpoint, or whether you want to talk about it from the appearance of your community, or however you want to approach that. And I do think the staff has done an amazing job of balancing both the needs and interests of business owners and the sign industry, and the needs and interests of a community that has an appearance and a safety standard that we want to achieve. I also think both the sign industry and Sinek Nevada has been very reasonable in their, compared to some of the all-out battles that we've seen in the region. I think that both sides are coming in with a very reasonable approach, and I put a lot of that down to the public outreach that staff did, so thank you, everybody, for that. So I do go down on the side of support. I figured if the sign industry wants 1,500, and Sinek Nevada wants 3,000 radial, then 3,000 linear is probably a place that we can draw the line. So I'd like to see 3,000 stay in the proposed ordinances. I mean, I just don't think that there's a public interest in removing it. And I think that's all I have for now.
Good. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, I had a real simple question, but I want to just, you know, 14 years on the city council, and this is the subject that never goes away. I mean, we've been involved in lawsuits, and every two years, we're back to new things on sign ordinance, so something tells me that we're not done here yet, because this is going to be a recurring item to be... In our present sign ordinance and code enforcement, actually, how many people have we gone out and talked to in two years about a A-frame that's for their business or a banner that they put up?
Currently, our code enforcement staff is responding to those types of issues on a complaint basis only. I don't have a firm number, but working with Joe and Cherie every day, I can tell you that they're out quite frequently talking to folks about signs. During the election period, I know that they get phone calls from residents about all the signs, and why can't we do anything? And so, it is a, you're correct, it's something that is not going to, it's not going to go away. With that said, however, I will, I will say that this current code has served us well for the last 12 years. It's never been challenged, and we've never been sued.
But we've changed codes several times the last 12 years.
Well, I would, I would say that the content neutrality, which was adopted in 2002, and really, the bulk of the code have remained the same. I think what we have done over the years is try to make changes to improve upon what we have. And I think that that's what our goal was here as well, was to improve upon what we have.
And I'm not going to argue that. And I appreciate that you, the great job you've done. I mean, truly, but I'm just saying that we're always going to be back at the table with sign ordinances, because one little word changes everything we talk about. So it, you know, I appreciate that. But my question goes back to, is I think that when we start talking about, we're going to spend staff time to this and going out, I think we could sit down and take a look at it. I'd like to see the number of complaints, since we have a policy that we only respond to a complaint. And we should have a very clear record of how many people in the last two years have called in, because Joe Bob's Chili Dogs is advertising the lunch special on a sidewalk in a chalkboard A-frame. You know, those should be documented things. Since we only respond to those complaints, we should have a response. Now, this is way off our topic here, but we've been talking about it now for the last 15, 20 minutes. The question I have is, get back to Mr. Smith's suggestion that, you know, you reach a compromise here that all existing billboards stay at 1,500 feet, but all new billboards go at 3,000 feet. And why does that not work again?
Well, I, I believe staff would have a difficult time trying to manage that.
Do you think more than the 3,000 feet already, you staff can manage that?
We certainly can do that, but having two different standards for what amounts to the same, I think is, is just an added layer for staff to keep track of, and certainly we can do that. But again, I think it would be more difficult for us.
Because I would think the first thing you want to permit application keep in that's done is how far away it is from something else. You got two standards. If it's an existing sign, it's got to be 1,500 feet, if it's a new sign, it's 3,000 feet.
Correct, but we have existing special freestanding signs out there that would be under a different standard than any special freestanding sign that would be approved from this day forward. That's where the challenge would be.
So which would you rather have? The 1,500 feet for everything, or 1,500 feet for existing and 3,000 for new?
We would prefer to have 3,000 lineal feet as proposed in the code.
Okay.
Is that it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion.
I still have a question, if I could.
Okay, go ahead, then, Mr. Carrigan can make a motion.
One thing I didn't hear anything about, and we've always had an order to post no signs, and they put their signs right over that notice that says post no signs for garage sale. Is that, is that anywhere in the code now? Because I knew that the problem is, they put them up, and six months later, they're still there advertising the same garage sale.
Right. In the current code, signs in the right-of-way are not permitted. And that's, that's what this situation would be, is signs in the right-of-way, and that has not changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve CA 309, Bill Number 2678, to amend Chapter 20.56, Signs of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Do you have a second? Ms. Rattie?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Carrigan, seconded by Ms. Rattie, to approve Agenda Item 11.2, which is Bill Number 2678. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. We're all over the board, so we have two for, two against, one abstention, okay? So we have, we have nothing, is what we have. Okay, anybody else like to make a motion? Mr. Smith?
I make a... I move to approve CA 309, Bill Number 2678, to amend Chapter 20.56, Signs of the City of Sparks Municipal Code, except to change the 3,000-foot marker to 1,500.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the Bill Number 2678 as amended. Do you understand the amendment? To 1,500 feet, so everyone understand that? Any further discussion? Same, same. Anybody else want to make a motion?
I'll make a comment. You know, on your map up there, all those blue are possible sites, so why couldn't we do the, I know you said it'd be a lot more work, why couldn't we keep everybody the way out they are now, and all those blue sites, they come under the 3,000-foot rule? Because it's all, it's on the southern portion of the industrial center, most of them, it'd be easy to work.
The concern that I have with that is how we're treating people differently. And, you know, again, it's about the fair and consistent enforcement of the signs.
You know, there's things done differently with people all the time. After a certain period, they hard, they make different money, they get different benefits. I mean, that's, that's nothing new.
I understand that. However, as a staff person who's looking at a purpose statement in our code, that is something that we have taken under consideration.
You can still make that motion. Okay, we'll see if they... Okay, I'll make that motion then. I'll restate it. I'll move to approve CA 309, Bill Number 2678, to amend Chapters 20.56, Signs of the Sparks Municipal Code, exclusion of new business, or new signs after whatever point this goes into effect, to 3,000 feet.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
I'll second if I can get, just make sure I get an explanation exactly what you...
In other words, the signs that are out there now, they're under the 1,500-foot rule. Anything, would you put up the map for me, please?
Yeah, all the blue dots, basically, is 3,000 feet. The red dots stay at 1,500, which that's what they're under right now.
That they are now. See, all the blue dots, southern part of the...
Yeah, all the blue dots, you'd go from 47 new sign spaces to 28 or 23.
But the new signs would be 3,000 feet spacing, is what you're proposing?
Right, right. That's, that's my motion.
That's a second?
I'll second that motion. I think it preserves some of the rights to the existing owners.
Can we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt? Questions? Ms. Rattie?
So I just want to clarify. So we've grandfathered lots of things in the past, and I understand the reason that we do that. But typically, when we're grandfathering something, we're grandfathering a current state. So where I have a problem with this is, that 3,000 separation is for digital specifically, correct? So, all those red dots, we're focusing on the blue dots, but all those red dots are currently, for the most part, non-digital signs. That, if they're 1,500 feet apart, could be improved to, if they meet the new permit, like the one on the, by the tank farm, a digital sign. So you could have a significant proliferation of digital signs everywhere that there's a red dot. Is that correct?
Not everywhere that there's a red dot. It would still have to meet that 1,500-foot separation.
Separation that there's a red dot.
But yes, that is...
Apologize, I didn't say that well. So that, to me, is getting the intent of the ordinance as it is. We're not just talking about blue dots, and we're not talking about an existing condition. We're not talking about digital signs that are all over our city. We're talking about a dramatic increase in digital signs.
You know, my, my opinion is, I don't think we're going to get every one of those to be a digital sign. Those things are very expensive, and not, everybody's going to come in and put, make every one of those a digital sign. That's just not going to happen, and I've seen some heads up here in the sign industry shaking. I mean, to me, that's, that's just not going to happen anytime soon. Mr. Schmidt?
May I? If I don't, I don't disagree, I don't think that every single sign is going to turn into a digital sign. That's not my point. My point is that the potential for the impact on specific neighborhoods. So you could have four in one small neighborhood, and they, you... I can't fact this up, but I'm going to say it anyway. The economic justice has shown that they go in low-income neighborhoods where the impact is on neighbors who do not have the same resources to fight back against those signs. So I'm concerned about the density of digital signs in specific neighborhoods, not necessarily that every single red dot is going to turn into a digital sign.
Mr. Schmidt?
Let me possibly put the map back up so we can see it. Because the whole notion of whether it's 1,500 or 3,000, you, you cannot sit down and come up with a number today of what you would actually end up with the number of signs. And I'll take the three dots, so what we've talked about. If CBS, are they the ones that owns those three signs? If they choose to do the middle one, they've canceled the other two out. If they choose to do the outside two, then they get two out of three. So, you know, that they, they, they either get one or two, depending on how, where they place it on that. And if you take 1,500 feet on a lot of those signs on out there, you're kind of still cancel out a bunch of those signs. So whoever goes in first, you know, some of those clusters on up there are pretty darn tight. 3,000 feet, you're going to just knock just majority of those folks on out. One person can take, you can take a lot of people out on that. So I, I, you know, there's, you know, a right with the sign right now to be able to do something if they, if they go through all the processes and everything on it. We don't know how many we're going to have. At 1,500, we don't know how many we're going to have at 3,000 feet, because that's up to the industry to decide where, who's going to come in and do things. I think that, you know, looking at the future signs, and be able to reduce their number on down, to me, outweighs what going through in the existing signs at. Because they have a right to do it right now, under the existing code. We're changing that right now.
Can I get a clarification? So, on looking at this map, it would be the red dots and the green dots would be, as of the date, today's date, the effective ordinance, they would have the 1,500-foot spacing. The blue dots would then be the 3,000-foot, as the motion's been made? Is that, I just wanted to clarify?
That's my understanding of the motion. That's where the motion was made.
You know, and if you look at the picture, the map, and on the far right-hand side, there's one, two, there's five signs right there. One digital sign wipeout, and probably the one to the left of that, too. And then you come into town, by the tank farm there, see that row of signs, I don't know what street that is, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven signs there. You'd only get one digital sign in there. And if, you can follow that all the way across, so you're not talking 49 digital signs, you're just not talking that. I'm sorry.
So on Vista Boulevard, is that what you're referring to, Councilman Smith?
The exit there.
So, on Vista Boulevard, you've got a digital sign on the west side of the street, and you have, yeah, you have six potential sign locations there. And so, under this proposal, we have an existing sign.
The blue one.
If somebody wanted to put in a new sign, it would have to be 3,000 feet from any other digital sign. So what you have in that scenario is the potential for three more digital signs on Vista Boulevard.
I don't, I don't see where you see that.
Because it's linear.
It's linear, so you have, so you have this digital sign here, and if a new sign were to be erected, it would be 3,000 feet away, which would be this one.
Okay.
So these two would be canceled out. And then this blue dot is across the street from that, so that could be digital, and then 3,000 feet means that this one here could also be digital.
There is a digital one right in there, right off of Vista.
Correct, that's the green dot.
Okay, I mixed up greens and blues, sorry. But does, how far is that green digital from those five dots, six dots?
So, so this, so this one is on the west side of the street, so, so...
They're not on the same street.
So to this particular dot, it's 1,500 feet. To this one, it's 1,500, and then 1,500 to this one. So what you see on here, the spacing between the blue dots on the same side of the street is all 1,500.
On that side of the street, it'd be 3,000, because they're new signs.
Correct. So what you have is, you have one here, one possible digital here, one possible digital here, and one possible digital here. So you have, you can have a total of four digital signs along Vista Boulevard based on the 3,000-foot separation.
Probably so.
So, and then, one, one point to clarify is, I know that we are talking about billboards. I know that we're talking about off-premise. However, our code, again, is content neutral, and we don't look at that. So really, what that means is, any property owner in the industrial area can erect a sign under the special freestanding sign section, and it eliminates any billboard location or any other special freestanding sign within whatever the specified distance is. This is not just about billboards. This is about property owners that can actually erect a sign up to 672 square feet. Doesn't have to be digital. I will point to Peterbilt, for example, which they wanted a special freestanding sign along the interstate so that it could be noticed. There's not a viable location there. So the alternative was to actually place that sign oriented towards Lark and Circle, which is still visible from I-80, not, probably not to the degree that they would have liked to have seen, but it was a solution. And that is not necessarily a billboard. That is a sign that was erected under the special freestanding sign. So, you know, this has other implications. Because any, we're not just talking about billboards. Any property owner could erect a sign under the special freestanding sign section, maximum 672, and comply with all the standards. It doesn't have to be a billboard.
Okay, Ms. Rattie, and don't forget, we have a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Ms. Rattie.
Well, and I think what Mr. Thompson just explained is that, you know, you can have four digital billboards up Vista, plus every property owner can put a digital sign in... four digital billboards up Vista, plus every property owner can put a digital sign in. I don't think that what staff has proposed is a particularly draconian sign ordinance. I think, I think they've done a nice job for the climate that is Sparks, Nevada, what the expectations are of the citizens of Nevada, what the expectations of the industry in this city of Nevada is. So, I really think that, as proposed, this is a well-thought-out compromise position, not something that's draconian in any sense of the matter.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you explain to me the difference between the ordinance you have written right now, the motion on the table, and what you just explained, why they would do four billboard signs on Vista Boulevard? I believe that either scenario, it's exactly the same, correct?
So, under today's code, the signs along Vista Boulevard, all of those blue dots are viable sign locations under our code today.
Okay, I want to talk about today's code. I want the code that you're proposing, 3,000 feet.
Right.
For digital billboards. And the motion that this council had on the table for 1,500 for existing, 3,000 for new, that number comes out four no matter what.
So, under, under the current code, or under the, under this proposed code, every single one of those locations is a viable location for a billboard at 1,500 feet.
Under the code you're proposing right now?
Under the code we're proposing now, each of those locations is a viable billboard location. They can put up static billboards at each one of those dots and probably meet the 1,500-foot separation requirement.
But the code you're proposing now is 3,000 feet.
Only for digital.
Only for digital.
Okay.
So, so, so basically, this proposed code would allow each of those locations a static billboard. If, if the, if the distance separation between digital billboards is reduced to 1,500 feet, every single one of those locations could be a digital billboard. If it, if it remains at the 3,000 feet, which is what we are proposing, then up that corridor, you would have three additional, you could have up to three additional digital billboards, not including the one that exists, so.
But also, it would be the same.
It's the same thing on both.
It's the same thing with our, with our, the way we're proposing it right now. They could still do the three, the three additional digital signs with the 3,000 linear feet.
Correct.
Because that's all we're talking about here, is digital.
Because these are not existing signs.
So, the number four is same under your proposal.
If that is.
That's what his point is, that it's the same.
But if, but if the distance separation between digital billboards is reduced to 1,500 feet, every single one of those signs.
But that's not the motion on the table.
That's not the motion. The motion is, any new signs is 3,000 feet.
Right, okay, so any new signs, 3,000 feet. So, you're correct, the number is still four.
Can anybody else have a motion on the floor? Anybody know, anybody, everybody understand the motion? Mr. Carrigan?
No, I don't understand it, then, if it's going to be the same.
Just on that corridor.
Make it, so I can go ahead and make it clear, if you want to keep that map on up there so we can see, is that, if you have a blue dot right now, under your proposal and under the council proposal, it's 3,000 feet. Nothing different there. Nothing changes in that, correct?
Correct.
Because that's new, proposed, possible billboards. The only difference that the proposals on the table is existing red dots and the dark The red dots and the dark green dots, who are existing billboards right now, the green dots are electronic already, correct? The red ones are not electronic. The only difference we're asking is, those existing billboards have the 1,500 instead of the 3,000 foot. All new proposal, we're exactly on the same sheet of music there. There's nothing different in this proposal, is that new billboards have to be, new digital billboards have to be 3,000 feet from another existing billboard.
A digital billboard.
Digital billboard.
And these green dots not, they're not all digital.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't, I thought the green dots were electronic. If it's an existing billboard, use a static, is a term you use for it, and they want to go to digital, they have to be 1,500 feet from another digital billboard. If it's someone building a brand-new billboard, digital, they have to be 3,000 feet from another existing digital billboard. Am I, am I, to make a motion, am I putting it pretty clear there? That's my interpretation of what I see here. I don't see anything, the only thing I see difference between what you're proposing and what we're proposing, is for anybody coming in and going ahead and putting another one up, they have to be 3,000 feet away. Existing, we get to work with them. They've invested in the community. You've already said you go through great lengths of trying to help to increase these billboards, make them up into conformance, bring them up into conformance. I think the sign industry is responsible enough to come forward and help with that. They're not going to have two competing digital billboards right next to each other. I think it's a reasonable solution at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ratty?
That answered your question. I was also looking for clarity of the question.
Okay.
So, just to say it back one more time, the red dots that are currently non-digital billboards, in this current motion, would be allowed to be converted to digital billboards at 1,500 feet, because they're already built. Okay, so I can't support that motion.
Mr. Carrigan?
Chuck, this is a question for you. In 2002, when we were sued by the billboard companies, did we not have to put up 10 billboards as part of that settlement that we didn't want to put up? Do you remember that? Does anybody here remember that?
Yeah.
You know, we did, we did. And then we had to draft a pretty extensive ordinance at that time, which pretty much went into the crapper as soon as we allowed the gateway signs. So, yeah, we did.
So, we bet the bullet in 2002 by letting 10 billboards come in?
Mm-hmm.
When we didn't, when we didn't want them?
Didn't want to ask.
The majority of this board didn't want them, because obviously.
Federal court wanted them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everyone understand the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pretty consistent. Okay, Ms. Ratty?
So, I have a question. There's a lot of really good work in the sign ordinance, and we directed you to start working on this in 2010, and here we are in 2014. So, I hate to hold up some of the pieces of the sign ordinance that are not digitally related, based on this. So, I guess my question is, if we made a motion to accept the changes of the sign ordinance minus section 20.56.170 slash, or print F, would that allow everything else to go into effect? And give us time, Chuck?
That takes away all the digital standards. What we need to do is take away the spacing.
No, I.
If you adopt it with the taking away of the spacing standard, not the F section, because the F section is, that's all of our standards for the digital signs.
But, Ms. Murphy, if we did that, wouldn't we be leaving it at 1,500?
Well, we could, you could say F minus the, what's the last number, the last letter?
But if it's currently 1,500, then the result of that would be moving it at 1,500. So, what I, what I would be suggesting is approving everything except for 20.56.170 print F and tabling that section, to see if we can come up with a compromise.
Can we ask for continuation so we can look at the impacts of what the options are?
Sure.
You automatically get a continuation. You can't hold up that thing.
Okay, so you'd rather have a continuation than approve a piecemeal, is what I'm hearing.
At this point, we don't know for sure what the other, the various impacts would be by taking and approving only sections of it at this point. So, we would rather not do this at the dais and actually.
This is not life or death, is it? If it goes on another two weeks or a month?
No. No. I mean, it's been four years, so.
Let me try, we have a motion, and it's, I approve this CA 309, bill number 2678, to amend chapter 20.56, signs of the Sparks Municipal Code. All new signs to be 3,000 feet from existing signs. That would eliminate a lot of those blue signs.
Can you go over that?
Yeah, all signs.
Are you talking about freestanding, or just the special freestanding?
All signs.
I think, I think, I mean, if I could just interject, I think you can understand the difficulty that we have, is, this sign code is so complex that we, I mean, it's taken us four years to get to this point, and I could tell you that what we have before you has been well-thought-out, and to change anything at this point, I'm not convinced that we would understand what the true impacts of that would be. And so, so I think a continuance would, would be the preferred option from staff at this point, but certainly, it's up to the council.
Okay, but if we continue this, do you understand what you're going to need to bring back to us to make this thing work?
No.
And there's no use to continue it, is there?
I mean, we can certainly talk and clarify. I mean, it's easy to say 3,000 feet, but is that for all my, all special freestanding signs, only digital signs?
What was your proposal?
Our, our proposal was strictly related to 3,000, to, to special freestanding signs that were digital, that the spacing requirement was 3,000 feet.
Ms. Ratty?
I think one potential benefit of continuing it is that if they can come back and say that we can approve this three-quarters of the sign ordinances, that really helps out those shopping centers that are trying to figure out, you know, is it, starts measuring it by the individual business instead of the entire shopping center? There's some things that the sign industry and scenic Nevada, we're all in agreement in. So, if we can do that, and it's not so interwoven that it makes it impossible to move forward, there's some benefit to be had sooner rather than later by approving, say, three-quarters, I don't know what the number is, but three-quarters of the sign ordinance, and then still working on this additional piece.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that we're on the same sheet of music, which I don't think we're at the same concert right now. The only issue that is different from what your proposal to what we had on the table here at the council, that I could see, the only issue is existing billboards at 1,500 feet, digital going digital, existing billboards going digital at 1,500 to 3,000. Is that correct? Is that, is that the only difference we have right now in the discussion?
It's, yes, it sounds to me like the, the direction is, is that for all existing billboards, and frankly, I think we would have to discuss with the city attorney's office how we would address those billboards that are actually north of the interstate, but.
What is a billboard? Is that a freestanding sign?
Special freestanding.
Special freestanding.
I wish it were that easy. I, I have to tell you, it's very difficult to sit here because of all the terms. You know, most people would recognize these signs as billboards, so I use the term "billboards" for clarity. But, in our world, those signs are either non-conforming outdoor advertising structures or special freestanding signs. If the direction is to change the proposed distance separation between digital special freestanding signs from 3,000 feet down to 15 feet, 1,500 feet, we can do that. If the proposal is to allow.
We can't do that, we voted no.
Allow the existing signs, we can take a look at that, as to what the impact would be, allowing the existing signs to be converted to digital, provided they meet the 1,500-foot requirement, which, again, we have signs that are north of the interstate on property that is not zoned industrial. How are we going to handle those particular non-conforming signs, as far as the conversion goes? Because today, today, we would not allow those signs to be converted. The only way that we would allow a sign today to be converted is if they met the special freestanding sign section.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I think the smart thing to do is to vote to okay this as staff wants it okayed, as set forward, and then see what happens, and see if we run into problems. And if we run into problems down the road, bring it back to the council, we can change the ordinance. So, I, I think we should pass it and see what happens. I just don't think it's going to make that big of a difference down the road. I don't think it's going to hurt anything to do it this way, because there are a lot of intricacies in here. If you start reading, you know, what's the difference between freestanding and billboard? So, I think the smart thing to do is to, to make the motion to okay it and see where it goes. And then after November, when I'm not here, you can bring it back and do what you want with it.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, let's go to the council. You want to, go ahead, Mike.
I'll try the motion again, and see where it goes, and see. I think the smart thing to do is pass it as is and bring it back later if it doesn't work. So, I'll make a motion that we approve CA 309, bill number 2678, to amend the chapter 20.56, signs of Sparks Municipal Code.
Do you have a second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Carrigan, seconded by Ratty. Any further discussion? Please vote.
You know, can I, can staff just take us back and get some common language that I can keep track of? You know, call me a dummy, I don't care.
But that's.
There is some common language, though.
We all know what a billboard is, Mike. Just follow the billboard.
May I make a suggestion?
Eliminate that.
We'll, maybe what the staff should do is, we will sit down, look at the implications through the ordinance, come back with alternatives, and then get a recommendation from the council on what alternative that you would like us to rewrite the ordinance to fit that alternative, and then we will correct the ordinance based on your input from that alternative.
Okay, so, where do you want the alternatives to come from?
Well, staff will look at options and on ways, based on the conversation today.
Okay, you would give us some alternatives when you come back?
Yes, yes. And then we would get direction from city council and then come back with the ordinance. And I don't know, do we have to do a first reading again, or, or just, how does that work? Do we have to start from first reading and second reading again?
Okay, this, this particular code amendment did not pass tonight. Okay, so, so a vote was never taken.
Right.
It was like it never occurred.
Never happened.
We've had a first reading already, so we can have a second reading, once we come back with, with some alternatives. Essentially, what you're going to be doing in the second reading, in the new second reading, is what you're doing tonight, and you're working with the council to present different alternatives.
So, the point, the part I'm missing here is, when are you going to work with the council so you can come up with some alternatives?
Well, what I was going to suggest is we come back.
Are you going to come up with some alternatives from what you've, what you've heard tonight? Then you're going to bring it back?
Yeah.
For us to talk about?
For direction. We would put it as like a general business item for direction.
Okay.
And then we could come back with the revised ordinance.
All right, I got it.
Does that work for council?
I would think that would work very nicely.
That'd be fine.
And how long do you need? I guess it doesn't matter, when you want to bring it back, when you've got all the stuff done, you can just put it on the agenda, because nothing has happened really at this meeting for this particular agenda item. So, when you're ready to go, bring it back, then we can discuss it and give you direction at that time, then you can come back again when you're ready with the actual ordinance, and hopefully, we can be smart enough to pass one.
That's just my suggestion, I, just trying to find a way out of this circle.
I think that works. Okay. All right, so, moving on, right, Chuck?
Correct.
Yikes. Closed-door sessions, do you know?
No, sir.
Want, good closed door, talk about signs or anything, or?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Comments, comments from the public? I have one speaker, Jennifer Snyder. Good job, you hung in there quite well.
Maybe she can solve her slide. Hi, I'm Jennifer Snyder. We're joined together Northern Nevada, a nonprofit substance abuse coalition, whose members include prevention and treatment professionals, law enforcement, medical personnel, and private citizens, among others. In response to medical marijuana dispensaries coming to our community, Joined Together Northern Nevada has developed a working subcommittee to study the issue and make recommendations. We're a little late in providing this information to you due to staffing changes at our organization, but we still want to be a resource and offer these recommendations. That the marijuana dispensaries are revenue neutral or positive, meaning that the cost of regulating them does not exceed the fees they are charged by the city or county, funding should be identified for all regulations of dispensaries, including law enforcement, code enforcement, attorneys, et cetera. code enforcement, attorneys, et cetera, in order to best identify hidden costs. The measures are taken to ensure that underage youth are not able to unlawfully purchase marijuana from the dispensaries. This could include compliance checks similar to those performed to drinking establishments. The experiences of other states that have dispensaries are researched so that lessons learned by those states can be applied to Sparks, Reno, and Wacho County. The dispensaries be held accountable to the highest standards of quality, particularly in the area of legitimate medical issues. Quality assurance must be maintained to avoid product with certain levels of toxins, pesticides, et cetera. In addition, dispensaries should be held to standards of cleanliness, professional appearance, and appropriate advertising. The dispensaries are regulated in a way that will diminish the possibility of black market activities such as illegal selling, use of illegal products, tax evasion, violence, trafficking, and other illicit drugs, and more. We offer our assistance as a community resource and will end with information from a recent article published by Dr. Nora Volkow from the National Institute of Drug Abuse. The article indicates the effects of a drug, legal or illegal, on individual health are determined not only by its pharmacological properties, but also by its availability and social acceptability. In this respect, legal drugs such as alcohol and tobacco offer a sobering perspective, accounting for the greatest burden of disease associated with drugs, not because they are more dangerous than illegal drugs, but because their legal status allows for more widespread exposure. It is reasonable and probably prudent to hypothesize that the use of marijuana will increase in that by extension, so will the number of persons for whom there will be negative health consequences. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Uh, do you want to leave those suggestions with our clerk so she can get them to staff?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for being
Thank you.
So patient and waiting. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, next is comments from the city council, city manager? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.